Good evening and welcome to the July 5, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Holland City Council. I am Mayor Nathan Box and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Breaman. Peters. Corbin. Coronado, here. Arnsors.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a call.
Great, thank you. We're going to begin this evening as we have for many years, first with opening prayer, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would invite you to join us if you're so inclined. Please join me in prayer if you're inclined. Lord, thank you for a wonderful summer evening.
One sec.
And a wonderful Independence Day holiday. Lord, you've given us the blessing of the opportunity to be able to serve the people of the city of Holland. Sometimes we have bright sunny days, some days those days turn dark. Lord, help us do your work for all of the people of the city of Holland. Give us patience. Give us wisdom and give us courage. Patience to listen to one another, to discuss, to make sure that all voices are heard. Lord, give us wisdom of discernment so that we can make the best decisions possible. And Lord, give us courage. Courage to make the right decision when that decision may be difficult to make. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next items on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they've been reviewed by council as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion altogether at once unless a member of the general public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, we'd like to have Kathy review that for us. Kathy, would you do that, please?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, June 21, 2023 Regular Meeting and June 28, 2023 Study Session. For C, Ose of Office. For D, City Clerk, Claim Filed Against the City. For E, City Clerk, Warner Vineyards On Premises Tasting Room License Adopt Resolution. For F, April Financial Reports. For G, Finance, PA 198 Tax Abatement, Conversion of Speculative IFT, Set Public Hearing for ATC Drive Train, July 19, 2023. For H, Finance, PA 198 Tax Abatement, Set Public Hearing for ATC Drive Train for the Interior Buildout, July 19, 2023. For I, Finance, PA 198 Tax Abatement, Set Public Hearing for VP Tool and Supply, July 19, 2023. For J, Finance, Purchasing Parks and Recreation Flower and Tulip Bulbs Award Bid. For K, Finance, Purchasing, Approved Purchase of Five 2023 Chevy Tahos. For L, Management Administrative Services Fiscal Year 2023 Strategic and Business Plan Final Report. For M, Management and Administrative Services Downtown Group, Approved 2023 Double-Up Food Bucks Grant for Holland Farmers Market. For N, Management Administrative Services Annual Department Report. For O, Management and Administrative Services Degraff Nature Center Interior Remodel Award Bid. For P, Management Administrative Services Lighting and Rigging Improvements Project, Holland Civic Center Place Award Bid.
Great, thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the general public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
I request that item four P be removed from consent.
All right, and that's the Lighting and Rigging Improvements Project for Holland Civic Center Place, and that'll be placed as item 12E 6.6. Any other items that council members would like to remove from consent? I do have one this evening myself, and that's item 4L, the Fiscal Year 2023 Strategic Business Plan and Final Report. And that would then be placed at item 12E 6.2 on the regular agenda. Anyone else have any items? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve with the exclusion of L and P per those motions.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnsors, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Corbin.
Coronado.
Yes.
Arnsors.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number five, Public Comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we give the public the opportunity, excuse me, easy for me to say. We give the public the opportunity to address all of our boards, committees, and commissions. We do limit the time to five minutes per person. You may speak one time during the meeting. You'll notice that there are three small lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means you have one minute left, and when the red light comes on, your time has expired, and we are strict about that. This is a time where you are able to speak to us. We don't answer questions during this time or engage in discussion, but it gives you the opportunity to speak about whatever you think is important. Having said that, when you come and address the microphone, address council, please state your name and the municipality in which you live. Is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality?
Okay. John Stewart, 14956 Maplewood, Plymouth, Michigan, Current Elected Trustee in Plymouth Township, a township of 30,000. My mother was the youngest of 12 Vanderbans, Centennial Home on 13th. Family owns commercial property on College Avenue. It's very painful for me to mention those things because I come from a very private family, a very well-educated family, an enlightened family. But my dear friend, Mayor Nathan Box, came to Plymouth on May 23 for a Michigan Week Luncheon. I gave him closing argument, counselor. He spoke after Brian Kelly, former Lieutenant Governor and current President of the Small Business Association of Michigan, on economic development. And Nathan was fantastic. I'm basically here to say thank you. I'm basically here to say those are good things we do when we come together and talk and exchange ideas, obviously east and west. Day trips to Holland, Michigan from Plymouth, two hour and 15 minute drive, northwest corner of Wayne County. I grew up with the senior citizen buses from Chicago parking in front of our house on 13th Street during tulip time, and I was trying to get to sleep as a kid. We've owned that house since 1916. I think the more we can do to be positive and to exchange positive ideas. My friend professionally, Carol Kane of CBS, who recently interviewed Secretary of Energy Governor, former Governor Granholm, did a full-page article on Holland, Michigan, and I laminated it for you. So I want to leave that with you. I want to thank you. May we go onward and forward, may there be economic development and growth. And I had a picture of a great lady who sat in the front of the room. There were 123 people at this luncheon. Chamber of Commerce, and it was a, it was a, Brian Kelly described it as an all-star audience. And we had Q and A, and we need to do more of these things. Gwen Awurda showed up. She decided not to ride with Nathan. She went to visit her mother in Ann Arbor. She's an Ann Arbor Pioneer High School graduate, great lady, just wonderful. So that's really the purpose of me stopping here tonight, to say thank you, and we need to do more positive, good things. I've never played hockey in my life. I've been on speed skates since I was three years old, and my father was still speed skating at 88 years old. So when that hockey, when your ice rink is open, in fact, I thought I should have brought a hundred dollar check toward the ice rink. You'll take it? Anyway, I'm looking forward to that. We read, we read the Holland Sentinel, and we check out, and we know what's going on. But thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know how that luncheon couldn't have been more positive. My, I shouldn't, my wife is the Executive Director of the Michigan Philharmonic, and she has met with the Executive Director of the Holland Symphony Orchestra. So we have many good things, and I have had a lot of requests from people, several saying we need to have a sister-city relationship between Plymouth. As I said, it's in the northwest corner of Wayne County, where I've been a practicing attorney for 45 years. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda this evening, item nine, Written Petitions and Communications. In addition, providing the opportunity for people to speak to us in person at council meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send comments. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Your email will be received by all of our council members. We do review those as part of our packet. We do not read them into the record, but we accept them into the record at our regular meetings, and my understanding is we do not have any this week to accept into the record. But I wanted to make that point. Next item, item 12D1, Early Voting/ Ottawa County Clerk, Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight you have in front of you background information for something that we believe will come before you later. I told Kathy I would hand it off to her first, but she strongly encouraged me to just welcome our Ottawa County Clerk Register of Deeds, Justin Roebuck, who's a fantastic partner between Kathy, Brenda sitting there in the back, and Justin. I think we have the best team in the state to implement fair, impartial, and well-run elections. So Justin, welcome, and we're excited about the proposal that you've worked on, and we're happy to partner with you also to describe this to us. So welcome to the city of Holland.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Keith, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me here. And Kathy, for allowing me to get up here and talk to your council. Yeah, I do have, let's see if here, if this, okay, Matt, oh, perfect, there we go. I have just a brief presentation of about eight slides that just kind of gives a little bit of an overview, I think, of what we're looking at. We've had a lot of election changes over the past several months, mostly due to Proposal Two that passed in 2022 in the November election. And specifically what I'm here to talk about tonight is this proposal that we are working very diligently on with all of our municipal clerks, all 23 jurisdictions in Ottawa County, for the implementation of early voting. And so just a couple of brief snippets about the proposal, in case you're not familiar. And I think a lot of our voters are not really familiar with all the facets that are involved, but particularly on the early voting side. Proposal 22-2 mandates nine days of early voting for every state and federal election, essentially an eight-hour period of time where voters have an opportunity to cast a ballot. And it specifically requires what we call polling place style voting, where you walk into a polling place, you are issued a ballot, and you cast that ballot into a tabulator. So, you know, theoretically, we could say, well, people vote early now, right? We've seen, probably seen the lines out here at City Hall during some of the major elections where people are casting an absentee ballot. And the difference there is that they're voting an absentee ballot, they're putting it in an envelope, it's sealed up, they're signing it, and that remains uncounted until Election Day when the absentee counting board counts it. So early voting looks different than that. No early reporting, so much like any other early voting that happens anywhere else in the country, ballots are tabulated, but results are not able to be displayed in any way, shape, or form until the polls close on election night. So another facet of the constitutional language that passed in November of 22 is that municipalities have the ability to contract either with other municipalities or with county governments to essentially facilitate this process. So the constitutional language really does put the essentially responsibility of early voting on the municipal governments, much like precinct voting and absentee voting. That is the responsibility of our local clerks, and the language specifically gives them the option to collaborate with other partners on that. Sorry. There we go. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Senate Bill 367, which is essentially the implementing legislation that passed to sort of enact what the voters did in November of 22. And this has taken a little bit to get to this point, which is one of the reasons why, you know, I feel as a clerk and maybe a slightly, you know, detail-oriented person, some of our clerks are that way also, that we're kind of last minute here. We need to be more prepared than we are. But the state, in fact, the state legislature has had to take a lot into consideration with this implementing legislation. Senate Bill 367, which is the main piece that governs early voting, did pass on June 28. So the House and Senate have both passed it. It's awaiting the governor's signature, but we don't have a PA yet, so it's still 367. But essentially, it requires the Secretary of State to provide the security apparatus for the vote center model, which is essentially in the Michigan Qualified Voter File. It has to be secure in the sense that it does not allow somebody to walk into one vote center and cast a ballot, and then walk somewhere else and cast another ballot. So similarly to some of the other changes of Proposal Two, the Qualified Voter File has to be updated to allow absentee ballots to be cast, or should say to track the casting of absentee ballots also in real time. So that's a security provision in 367. It allows municipalities that are conducting early voting to set hours outside of the mandated timeframes. Again, nine days is the constitutionally required amount of time that voters have the right to cast a ballot early, and they have to be for an eight-hour period of time. But there is flexibility in the days within that, those nine days, when the voting can occur. There's also flexibility for jurisdictions to say, no, we want to do 20 days of early voting. I believe that the maximum limit required due to programming limitations and all other kinds of things is 30 days. So there's a flexibility there. It also provides for the security measures essentially that would allow the secure storage of ballots. When you think about, this is a little bit of a different setup than Election Day voting, where everything comes back here and is under lock and key within the city hall, within the clerk's office on election night. We have nine days now to store ballots, tabulators, voting equipment, so there's very specific security requirements around that. Also establishing the process and requiring requirements for entering this county municipal agreement, those are all laid out in 367, requires the county clerk to submit an early voting plan to the Secretary of State, and also part of that early voting plan is a communications plan for our voters as well. And in my experience, I don't know about yours, but as I'm talking to voters, I think a lot of our voters are still currently not really aware of a lot of these changes. And so that is the reason for the communication plan requirement as well. So just a really broad overview to share with you tonight on sort of what our collaboration plan looks like as of right now. As we've had a number of conversations with our local clerks, I think my top priority as the county election official is to say to our locals, what is it that you need from us in order to be successful? I think we're in a very challenging time, honestly, for election administration across the country, and these are significant changes that really do need the support and resources of state and local and county government in order to make our clerks and election administrators successful. And as we've come away with these conversations, we really had the first one as a, as a, an organization back in October of 2022, as we were looking toward the potential, we had sort of what we called a what-if meeting. So what if this thing passes? What does this look like? And we have a very strong association, a lot of really great leaders in the association. Kathy and Brenda are certainly people that I rely on for advice and feedback often. And so they were instrumental in those early discussions as well, but we've come away with this idea that engaging essentially the county clerk staff to implement early voting in a county-wide, universal platform where we essentially have a vote center model. So what we're currently looking at is establishing a two-year agreement between county government and 23 local municipal governments and the county clerk's office, I should say, for the conduct of early voting in a county-wide model. The two-year agreement is two years because that is specifically what is laid out in the statute and in the constitutional language. So it is the year of the election and the year preceding the election, which is a little bit of a different model, but we, you know, again, are looking at that two-year agreement because of the statute. So what we're going to do, or what we intend to do, is utilize a vote center model so that anybody can vote anywhere within the county, and that also includes our Allegan County residents, of course, in the city of Holland. So when you look at voting across the country, there's really, you know, three ways to do it. One is what we traditionally consider Election Day voting, which is where you go in your neighborhood and your, you know, church or school, wherever that is, very close to home, and you cast a ballot on Election Day. Of course, we're all familiar with absentee voting, which is where you can vote by mail. That process expanded quite a bit in 2018 here in Michigan, and you can now vote absentee for any reason. But the third form, we're really not as familiar with here, and that is early voting, which is typically done in states where, you know, Michigan is pretty unique in its decentralized election structure, where municipalities really do run elections in the state of Michigan. That's not the case in most other states. So if you're looking at the states that do early voting now, it's centralized at the county level, and early voting happens in a gymnasium, or sometimes, depending on the state, the laws, you know, it could be the front of a supermarket, or somewhere that is large and is convenient to voters off of a highway. Maybe as you're on your way to work, you get off and you quickly, or on your way to Costco, you run in, grab your groceries, and there's an actual voting center set up in the parking lot. There's a lot of ways of doing this that look very different than what we're used to in Michigan. Michigan still has a lot of constrictions on where we can place a polling location, which I think for the most part are good things. So you can't vote at Costco in Michigan, but the vote center model looks like a more centralized, larger precinct-based model. It's not, you know, somewhere that is a couple of steps from your front door. It's more where you work, where you shop, it's those places that are convenient to voters. And so that would be our model of trying to establish essentially that plan for Ottawa County. And I think there is some real value in that in a couple of things. So we have here a very rough estimation based on the preliminary conversations that we've had with a number of potential sites for early voting, and we're looking at four centers right now. One in the Grand Haven area, one in the Georgetown Township area, one north of the Grand River in Crockery Township essentially, which is a central location for some of those more rural areas north of the river in Ottawa County, and then of course, one in the Holland area. There's some real advantages to this, and I think we get into it in a, maybe the next slide, I'm talking a little bit about that. But one of the important things, I think, is communication. When we talk about the way this is implemented in a very decentralized system, we have the potential for a lot of voter confusion when different municipalities are doing different things, and maybe your neighbor has an opportunity to vote for three more days than you do. Maybe your neighbor votes at their city hall, but you vote in a gymnasium across, you know, this parking lot from where you work. There's a lot of different potential for potential confusion in this process, and what we want to do is really create a plan that solidifies a solid communication plan with our voters as well. So kind of breaking down the responsibilities of the county and local clerks under this collaborative agreement. So we, at the county level, would be responsible for the logistical operation of early voting centers. So we would essentially be securing the locations, the rental agreements, knowing where and when we are going to deploy. Also for the hiring, training, and scheduling of election inspectors to actually conduct early voting as precinct workers essentially in our precincts. Purchasing and securing of all of the equipment and supplies that are needed, as well as the programming of all the election equipment needed for early voting, as well as implementing the communication plan that we talked about a little earlier. So on the local side, the responsibilities would be, and actually the implementing statute requires this, which is interesting but helpful, I think our clerks would probably do this anyway, but the local clerk would be responsible in a county municipal agreement for providing the county clerks with a listing and contact information for their election workers so that we can at least first recruit from that pool of people who are experienced, who know the community, who've done this a few times before. And we would certainly, you know, work together with our local clerks to do that. Also, we have a stipulation in the agreement, which the statute also specifically allows, which is providing support from the clerk's office, whether that be the clerk, a deputy, one day at the vote center. So in other words, our clerks would be in rotation of providing essentially supervision support at the vote center site. And I think this is an important aspect. We've talked about this as an association, whether or not to include that, but I think it's important for our municipal clerks to have that buy-in, for our voters and for our election workers to know that municipal clerks are very much connected and involved with this process. And also providing for the purchase and supply of the precinct test ballots and the materials that are needed to test the voting equipment, which is currently what our local clerks do as well, so that's not really a change. Really important factor here is cost, and I, one critical piece of this presentation that is missing tonight is the actual full cost breakdown. I know you had some information in your packets earlier this week as well, but literally this cost is shifting as we piece together all of the required components of the early voting process and implementation and what this looks like. So any costs that I talk about here today, or any costs that you did receive earlier, are all based on the state of Michigan funding zero, funding zero dollars for this project. We wanted to make sure that in the planning stages, we gave a worst-case scenario breakdown, essentially in terms of what the cost would look like to the county and the cost would look like for municipal governments, and truly, that's not going to be the case. We did have on, also June 28, some appropriations legislation that passed, which basically allotted about $30 million in state funding toward specifically to incentivize county and local agreements. So I have a lot of colleagues around the state who are working hard at agreements with their local units of government as well, and I think the state sees a reason to incentivize this, because when you think about, we have 1,500 jurisdictions in the state of Michigan that run elections, and tabulators cost a lot of money. And so if we had 1,500 jurisdictions that all needed equipment, just equipment alone, let alone the manpower and the labor cost, I think there's real incentive for the state to say, okay, can you collaborate and work together? So we're very optimistic on So we're very optimistic on that. But what we're looking at here is the breakdown of what the county would pay, essentially, and what the local units of government would pay. So the county is, under this agreement, providing for the election equipment needed, which would include tabulators, include the voter assist terminal devices, which are ADA compliant devices that help voters mark ballots in the precincts. Also, the potential for print-on-demand devices as well. So when you think about a vote center model, again, anyone in the county coming into a vote center to cast a ballot, we have to have those ballots available for voters. And so print, print-on-demand devices included in that cost breakdown there, as well as the, the staffing, 75% in year two of our early voting coordinator staff. So one of the really important pieces of this agreement calls for a full-time employee to essentially manage the early voting process and coordinate all of our municipal jurisdictions. And we felt like that was very important to have, a full-time person doing that. But also recognizing that the cost of that is borne by our local units of government, and realizing the county needed some buy-in for that second year of operation where we're not holding early voting sites. And so we're paying essentially 75% of that individual salary during year two. And that cost would be borne by about 25% picked up by the local units of government. Local units are covering the material cost of the vote center operations. So, you know, basically, this is the security cages to hold the tabulators and the ballot containers and the the physical things that you will need to conduct an election poll books. And there is a specific line item in every single cost summary, I've noticed. We've worked with the collaboration of clerks, Brenda's been a part of that. And there's a very specific line item in the cost for I voted stickers. So I'm glad to see that the, our clerk community thinks that's really important. So I voted stickers are also included in this cost as a separate line item, but as well as 50% of equipment maintenance, so ongoing maintenance, this is basically status quo with what you do now. So in 2017, when we purchased equipment, the county purchased all voting equipment, local units of government pick up 50% of the tab for maintenance on the equipment, the county the other 50. So that's included in the local unit cost there as well. 100% of the salary of the early voting coordinator during the even-numbered year, the first year of the agreement, 25% in the, in year two, as well as election worker and temporary staff costs. So that's, again, you know, labor is a significant piece of the cost, but it's also incredible, an incredible cost savings when you look at what we would need in a, in a consolidated collaborative model versus everyone doing it individually. So it's a very significant cost reduction, essentially. This is just a, a basic overview of the estimated cost distribution. And again, I, I really feel like it's important for me not to, I didn't want to come here with numbers that we don't believe are final numbers for you tonight. So we are working diligently on that. In fact, I just got another updated spreadsheet before I left the office tonight. But what we're looking at is approximately a total of about $750,000 for the entire total project cost over two years. So this includes all of the implementation. You could see year one is significantly higher because of the implementation costs, right? The things we have to buy in order to make this work, equipment being the big factor there. But also, there are some ongoing costs that clearly, like, we're going to have to pay for election worker labor every single time we have an election. And so year two breaks down some other costs. It's also distributed over our fiscal year at the county, which begins in October. So the presidential election lands in the next fiscal year of the contract, if that makes sense. But honestly, we believe that a total of $750,000 is a pretty darn good deal to administer four elections for 200 and, you know, almost 240,000 registered voters, eight hours of early voting every day, nine days for all of those four elections. We think that that is a really good deal for our taxpayers. The county will be picking up roughly 34% of that total cost in year one, 51% of the total cost in year two. And that cost is kind of wrapped up in the equipment, the equipment maintenance, the salaries of the, the full-time staff, and some other things as well. So that's kind of what we're looking at as the, the cost basis. And again, this is all factoring in the state covering nothing at this point, and we, we know that that's not going to happen. So that's, that's also encouraging. And really, the, these are some of the big benefits that we see with this process. The cost efficiency is real. When you look at equipment and labor, personnel costs alone, there's real savings doing this together with all jurisdictions within the county versus doing it independently 23 different times. It's customer-focused. So I think the really important thing here is the voters get one message. It's a unified message. Here are the places you can vote. You can vote anywhere within the, the county, at any of these vote centers. There's a standard, across-the-board, uniform time every single day that the vote centers are open. And so that messaging can be really uniform for the voters and hopefully convenient as well. And then the security factor is important for us as well, when we look at securing these locations, securing four locations over a nine-day period of time with the election equipment, ballot distribution, and those, those things are critical factors for us as well. And this can be done in a really efficient way. Our training can be consistent and uniform. The, the actual physical products that we use to secure things can be uniform. So we think that there's a real benefit in that process also. And I think that's all I have, just in terms of our general presentation, but obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Robach. Any questions from council?
One, our, in our packet, it says there are operating three early voting centers, but you mentioned four.
Yes, so this has been an ongoing discussion with, within the association of our local clerks. And originally, our original plan called for three centers. One of the concerns that kept, kept coming up with three, it's a couple of different ones, but one of the big factors was we initially, because of numbers and the way that we were distributing centers based on population and registered voters, we didn't have a location that is north of the Grand River. And I think that was a concern on the customer service level for voters and the equity level of having a voter, you know, in Chester Township or Crockery Township or Wright Township, travel into one of those other vote centers. I think the goal of the vote center, right, is to be at a place where people typically travel. And so a lot of the feedback that we were getting from our, from our clerks in those regions, but also from, from other people who were concerned about not providing that. The other advantage that I think we're, we're going to have is we look at actual numbers of, of what we can expect at any given vote center. We do need to be conscious of how many potential voters we're going to be experiencing in, in any given location. And so trying to divide that up based on, obviously, we don't have any data right now, because we've never done this before. But we're looking at other states' data and what they've done. And what we see is a typical breakdown of about a third. So when you look at the average state that has access to absentee voting, early voting, and of course, election day, you see about a third, a third, a third. So when we look at those numbers, we want to make sure that we're keeping lines to a minimum. We want to plan for sort of the, the overall experience for the voter needs to be, obviously, a positive one and a good one. And I think adding an additional vote center will help that quite a bit. We were able to significantly look at costs, in particular, labor costs, and make sure that we were allocating things appropriately based on vote centers, because I think that the original numbers that you have as well, that you were sent, kind of has this across-the-board standard number of 10 election workers per day, every day. We adjusted some of those costs. So really, the total cost to the city has not increased significantly. And, and I think we're going to be able to keep those costs at a reasonable level, based on what you're seeing here in the numbers. So I wouldn't expect any, any extreme additional cost.
Other questions? Mr. Corbin?
From being here today. Well explained. I appreciate the explanation on all these. Do you, do you anticipate a lower absentee vote because of this nine days?
That's a great question. I do, because of a couple of factors. I mean, I think we're, we've added a third option in here, right, for voters. And so I anticipate that the voters now, I mean, what we see is absentee numbers, I'm not sure what the city's numbers are exactly, but we're roughly at 50% absentee in a large election. We're in the, the mid-40s range countywide. And I think the introduction of a new method of voting, I think a lot of people do like the idea of being able to physically, personally cast that ballot in a tabulator. It feels better sometimes to people to know, okay, that's where my vote went, you know? So I anticipate these numbers to shift and change. What we see also, when you look at research from other states, is a lot of times when a new method's introduced, it'd be, it's popular for a little while, and then you have this kind of tapering-off period where things kind of level back out. But I would, I would anticipate election day and absentee voting to decrease a little bit, probably a little bit more on the absentee side than the election day side, would be my guess.
So I applaud also the effort of the, of the Clerks Association to get consistency across the county. Concerns are across the state, right? Because our media outlets don't just, you know, communicate what our times are in our county. They're going to be doing the entire region and throughout the state, and there's going to be a, hopefully, not a variation, a deep variation, widespread variation in these times that these centers are open. Is there an effort by your state association to make them a little bit more consistent?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. Yes, I think that was one of the concerns that we had at the very beginning of the proposal, was that, you know, I, I like, in theory, the idea that it's not a top-down-run system, right? And that we do have flexibility in administrating elections. The problem and the, the challenge with that comes where you have voters being treated differently. And that's a concern of mine across the state, if I'm going to be honest with you, is that we have, you know, municipalities in other places that are saying, you know, we want to do the maximum. And currently, like, our projection in our two-year agreement, we, we wanted to start with what we were mandated to do by the Constitution. And then, you know, we can certainly have further discussions and go from there, but I think what we're seeing is some municipalities want to do it 20 days and others aren't doing it nine. And literally, it could be a difference of a, a street, you know, on the other side of the street. That's an inequity for a voter, and that is a concern. It's a concern that we voiced to the legislature in the implementing legislation. They were a little bit constricted by the constitutional language, though, that made, made it flexible even within the constitutional language. So I think the more consistency we have, the better. And you're right, yeah, I mean, we're in a media market with, obviously, a lot of other municipalities. One of the things that is required that's also in the cost analysis as well, is a notice that gets sent to every registered voter. So we would be able to produce, obviously, a physical mailed notice to every voter that says, here's your options, you know, and hopefully, that's helpful to them as well. But.
Yeah, the public relations piece is going to be huge on behalf of the clerks, but also city council, members of elected state, you know, personnel to get out that information. You mentioned security, because we're not going to these smaller jurisdictions, we're not going to these smaller jurisdictions. I get a little bit concerned about security. I know we're talking about security of ballots and, but I'm talking of physical security. There are people that still, this is a nation, a country that has a lot of opinions, and people want to express those opinions as close to the poll sites as possible. And so what, is there any, any additional costs that you're including or considered for site security, especially for these larger voting locations?
That's a great question, and that's probably something we, we should be taking a, a closer look at. There are some incidental cost figures that I think could, could be allocated to security, but there's nothing, there's not a line item specifically, you know, in these proposed cost allocation plans that says security. And that is definitely something that's top of mind for us in, in many ways. I mean, I think we, you know, the past couple of election cycles, we've had a lot of conversations. We have great relationships with our law enforcement. As we look at early voting on the election administration side, we see it as a, a, a factor that actually lessens a security risk. When you think about an environment where you only have election day voting, that is the day that everyone has to come to the polls and cast a ballot. That's, that's a bigger security risk. And certainly, spreading out that, essentially, what it equates to is a spreading out of the risk, right? Because say, an incident were to happen at a polling location during early voting, that polling location may have to shut down, but other locations are open and available, and it may be up and running again the next day. And that can't happen on election day. Those are very different security challenges that we have. But I, I fully agree with you. I think that's, needs to be a part of the conversation moving forward.
So last observation or question is, can you explain the difference on election day versus the nine days, and what's that look like for an individual who can't make it to a, a distant center that we're talking about?
Sure.
Sort of absentee, but wants to physically actually vote?
Yeah, and I'm actually a pretty big fan of voting on election day in a precinct. I take my kids. It's a fun thing to do. It's something that it just feels right. I, obviously, I vote at absentee. I'm sure I'll early vote at some point, too. But election day is not really going to look much different. All of the same pieces of the, the process have to be in place on election day that we, that we're very familiar with. In fact, the early voting polling site is going to look very similar to our election day process, where a voter has to, you know, go in, fill out an application, get checked in, get issued a ballot, go to a voting booth and, and cast the ballot. What I will say is I think it'll be a better experience in some way because of the, you know, we, we've seen a dramatic reduction in congestion, you know, and I know Kathy and Brenda can speak to this as well. I mean, since 2018, just with the number of absentee ballots. So people are choosing to use different methods, and that lessens some of the lines and some of the potential congestion at polling locations, so.
Well, thank you very much for your leadership on this, as well as the clerks, not only present, but throughout the county, for what they've done in their collaboration. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions from council members? Mr. Byrd?
Forgive me if I missed these, but I wanted to get some, some dates or timing possible. When is the implementation of this or?
It's a great question. Yes, so that is a great question. So the target implementation, the, the absolute implementation deadline is the first federal election of 2024, which is the February 27 presidential preference primary. So that's considered a federal election, because obviously, we have federal candidates on the ballot. So the next election for early voting would then be our August state primary, and then our presidential, or excuse me, our, yeah, general election, the presidential election in November. So implementation deadlines, we have a late November deadline to get an early voting plan to the Secretary of State. I want to say it's November 29 in, in every county. So, so counties, there are a number of counties that are contracting with municipal governments across the state, and I've been in a conversation with a lot of those guys as well. And I think they've been very excited to look at our resources and see what, what our numbers look like, and we've obviously asked them for their information, too. But we all have to submit plans to the Secretary of State as far as what we're doing and how it's, how it's being done by, I want to say, the 29th of November, so it's late November.
After election, after everything's calmed down a little bit.
Give us a week or so to.
What about state funding? Is, is, you know, right now, it's, it's up in the air? When will, I guess, have, we got a date for that yet?
Yeah, that, that has been the big question. Honestly, you know, I've been a part, I know Brenda specifically here serves on our OCCA, like, our legislative group with the local Ottawa County Clerks Association. She's been advocating for that in that group. I serve on the legislative committees of the County Clerks Association, as well as this joint group of local and county clerks around the state. And I've also been a part of a group that Secretary Benson has organized of basically, you know, a couple of county clerks, a couple of city clerks, and a lot of other folks involved in the process. And we've continued to press that issue of funding. Honestly, the leadership currently in Lansing has been very positive on the funding side, because this is something that the current legislative leadership has supported. So early voting is something that they do want, I believe, to, to fund. And we've been a little bit frustrated in the negotiations, just because I think it's, it's the time. And we've been a little bit frustrated in the negotiations just because I think it's, it's the timing, right? We, we're thinking, okay, well, you know, I've got, if I got to buy a voting machine, I have to buy that by October, so that means, you know, does that go in my budget? Or does that grant funded in my budget, you know, those kinds of questions, so. I wish I had a great answer, although I do know that with the funding piece that passed on the twenty-eighth of June, we haven't had a chance to dive into that and it was pretty broad. It was thirty million dollars specifically to incentivize county and local agreements. So what exactly does that mean? I, I can tell you that I think that the state is going to come in on a couple of fronts that, and this is more speculation, I guess, on my part because we haven't seen anything in writing, but payment for rental or location, the cost of actually holding the early voting at a, at a site, payment for the first three election workers present, which is the statutory minimum that we would have to have, as well as payment for the voting equipment that we would need to conduct. And those are big, those are big things. So we could potentially see that seven hundred and fifty thousand come down significantly. And that's part of our challenge in, in bringing something to you, right? Is it's very frustrating on my part to have to bring something to you that's not accurate. But we're sort of operating on others' deadlines at this point.
I get that. Couple other questions, one. You stated that we would all get new machines, correct? Would that be a correct statement or?
For specifically machines for early voting.
Yes.
Right.
So the old machines we have, we can't use those ones?
Correct. And, and that is because we're still using those for the precinct, right? So, so what's happening is we're required to have, and we do have statutory requirement of one tabulator in every single voting precinct. Absentee counting boards, like the board that counts absentee ballots that's held here at the city, they have multiple tabulators based on volume. So there's, there's a calculation the clerk's office does and says, well, we've got five thousand ballots for this election. We're, we're going to need three tabulators or whatever. The problem is we cannot transition the equipment because of a number of factors, but mainly because of the public testing factor. So that equipment in the early voting site is going to be programmed to tabulate ballots and not release any totals until election night. And so in order to use that physical piece of equipment on election day, we would have to go in, remove the programming from that device for early voting, store that separately, reprogram the, the tabulator and then retest it and deploy it in a precinct. And the test has to be conducted in a public forum. So the public accuracy test that goes on, which we conduct here in this space, has to be a minimum currently legislatively, five days prior to the election, a minimum. We usually do it a couple of weeks or more to allow the public to view that process. And so if we only had one or two tabulators to do that, that might be fine, but we have one day, we have the Monday before the election. Because early voting occurs under the constitutional language required to be the, the second Saturday prior to the election up until the Sunday prior to the election. So that's the real reason we can't
Wow.
use election day equipment.
That's kind of crazy. So with that being said, I, I guess, I, I'm just thinking, so this is the state of Michigan, right? So everybody has to do this and now I start thinking about, we just had supply chain issues. So now it's like the mad dash, right, for toilet paper all over again, right? I'm, I'm first in line. Do we have a plan in place that I guess we don't get caught without being able to get everything that we need?
Very good question, something that we've been thinking through quite a bit logistically. So the answer to that is yes, I mean, particularly in a, in an environment where we're collaborating like this, the, you know, for example, the equipment needed goes from a minimum of, you know, probably around thirty tabulators countywide to more like ten. So that's a much more manageable amount of equipment just on the tabulator side. But we've already had those conversations with our vendor. We use Hart and Civic for election equipment under a state's contract. And we have confirmed with them, kind of like, as we're saying, like the distribution dates, that October date is really when we need to make sure to let them know. But it's the tabulators, it's the printers for the, the ADA devices, it's the ADA devices themselves. We have to have all that stuff ready to go and we, we do currently, we have that stock. Ballot stock is another big one. We've actually, back in, in two thousand and twenty-one, we purchased all the ballot stock countywide that we were going to need for the twenty-two cycle because of those supply chain issues that we were experiencing. So our print vendor, we have a longstanding relationship with, is basically like, yeah, you should probably, you know, get that order and. So we've been in a lot of conversations with them, which is another reason why we would love to be able to deploy print on-demand devices, which obviously save paper, right? But we are going to have a backup of, of every single ballot. We have about a hundred and sixty ballot styles in the county. So we have to have a backup of copies of those, you know, physical ballots in every location as well. So that's another supply chain thing that we're cognizant of and making sure that we can deploy that.
All right. Interesting. My last question is, so what we're doing as a state, are there any other states that have done this?
No, this is a really interesting process because what, what, what we see with early voting in other states is this much more centralized process. The county, you know, just using like South Carolina as an example, I'm, you know, pretty good friends with the election director of South Carolina. They, they have done early voting, I want to say several cycles anyway, probably ten or twelve years. But the counties there run the, so the county manages all the voter database, the county manages all of the equipment, hires all of the election workers, maintains all of the polling sites. That's all sort of under one umbrella. Here in Michigan, Michigan and Maine and a little bit of Wisconsin, the, the three states that have truly local control of city and township, clerks and municipal governments managing their elections. So obviously Kathy is responsible for hiring her election workers, for maintaining her polling sites. You know, we train workers, but she hires and fires them. I mean, so there's a lot of diversity, which is healthy in a lot of ways. I mean, we have a lot of checks and balances. But this early voting is sort of overlaying this very centralized process on top of a decentralized process. So our goal is to try to figure out how do we make this manageable and affordable and kind of makes sense for voters too, right? Who, who chose to do this, like they, they asked for this.
Yep, all right, great, thank you, I appreciate it. We have a lot of work ahead of you.
Any other questions from council members? Justin, thank you for that report and again, to echo what Mr. Byrd said, a lot of work in front of you. We've got a high level of confidence in you and in our, our local clerks as well to make sure that these elections are run very well and every vote that should be counted is counted and everybody has the opportunity to vote. So thank you for that, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you. The action that we're looking at taking here is just accepting this for information, is that correct, Mr., Mr. Van Beek? So recommendation from staff on this is the, is a motion there to take this as information? What's the pleasure of council in regard to this matter?
Will we accept for information?
Moved by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin? Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsour?
Yes.
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to our first, or excuse me, no, gifts, I believe are next. Twelve E six point one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gift. Parks and Recreation Sal Perez Youth Scholarship Fund. Employee deductions, January twenty-three through June twenty-three, seven hundred and eighty dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account and an expression of gratitude be set forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Motion to approve said gifts with the token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnsour, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now on to the first of the items removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda was L on the consent agenda. It is twelve E six point two fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three strategic and business plan final report. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Quite often when particularly council members pull something off the consent agenda, usually there's a point or a question or something, so on both of these, I think we'll get out of the way as soon as possible. But basically what you have in front of you here is the year-end report on the strategic and business plan. We match this plan that goes along with our fiscal year, which is July one through June thirty. And one thing that we did add into this, I think there were a few suggestions, I remember Lynn specifically saying, hey, like every time we do this, either when you adopt the first plan or when you do the final report, like highlights. So we did incorporate highlights this year of what was completed in the entire year. And then it just seemed like an opportune time where we looked back. It really reports on five years, really we've had four strategic and business plans. You really didn't have a written document like this before in the past, so. That is what's in front of you, we have several slide shows here, but I think Mr. Mayor, I think you pulled it off, so I'd be happy to answer any further questions or anything that you'd be interested in.
Absolutely, I didn't, I didn't have any questions, I just thought it, it deserved the, it deserved attention as part of the regular agenda. This is a process that is the only process that I've ever known in, in being an elected official here in the city of Holland. I know we've got council members who've been here when we did other processes, but I'm, I'm very, very proud of this process, I think that this is an effective process. This is the end of an, about an eighteen-month cycle that we go in. We started a year and a half ago with essentially a coffee with council where we asked the public what they were concerned about and what they would like to see happen. Then we as council, well, then we, then we saw reports from all of the staff members on what they had been doing, what they were looking at doing. And then we as council met and set our priorities. And from those priorities, then our staff built a budget. And that's essentially the planning phase of this. And then we moved into implementation. And then implementation means actually approving that budget and starting to do all of the work that's necessary in order to get these things done. And then the third phase of that is reviewing that and this is that, that review piece. And one thing I like to point out to the public is that every single action that we take as a council, we have a report from staff and one of the items on that report from staff is, points directly back to where it fits in this business plan and where it fits in with the priorities that we set as council. We are very, very deliberate about process here, about doing that planning right, about doing that implementation right. And then making sure with this review process, making sure that we are executing that plan the way that we want to execute that plan. And that's really was my point in putting this forward is to, is to make sure that the public understood that we don't just do things at random here. It is all part of a process, an eighteen-month cycle that ended at the beginning of this week and we are, we're already six months into the next cycle with this. It's a brand-new fiscal year, but we've been planning for the last six months for the fiscal year that started on July first and at the end, twelve months from now, we'll be looking at the same type of thing. So I, I just want to make the public aware, it's a, it's a short document. It's available on the city's website. I think that it is worthwhile reading, especially the highlights, which I think are a great addition this year to show not only what we've done in, during this fiscal year, but for the last four fiscal years starting back in two thousand and twenty. So my, my kudos not only to staff, but to council for making sure that this process happens and happens well every single year. Any other comments or questions from council members? Mr. Corbin, you leaned in with your microphone there, no? Well, I would, I actually would. Now, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the strategic and business plan?
Motion to accept item twelve E six point two, report fiscal two thousand and twenty-three strategic and business plan final report.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion from council members? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsour?
Yes.
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Corbin? Sorry, motion carries.
Next item that was pulled from consent and put on the regular agenda is item twelve E six point six. It was item P on the consent agenda and that is the lighting and rigging improvements project for the Holland Civic Center place. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I always like to point out when we talk about the Civic Center is it really is set up a different structure. When the Civic Center organization was initially set up, unlike a, a staff department, the Civic Center is run by a contracted vendor and the day-to-day management of that, of the Civic Center place and the vendor is actually resides not with staff reporting to you, but resides with an appointed Holland Civic Center Place Board that reports to you. But I'm going to hand it over to Matt because he is the liaison staff-wise and he knows about this project, which we made available to Civic Center Place and venue works along, yeah. You, you can give that history.
Thank you, Key. Yeah, this is even a little bit more confusing because the recommendation actually comes from our department because it is out of the Municipal Capital Improvement Fund. But as Key stated, this recommend, this is a recommended improvement from the Holland Civic Center Place Board. This was actually approved in the budget that just expired five days ago. So one of the parts, so the motion is to make the, is to authorize finance to make the necessary budget adjustments. What this is, is since it's opening, one of the criticisms of the Civic Center is that every time we have to have a concert or a larger show or like, I think some of you have been to the, the big chamber events that happen in there and those kind of things. We need to bring in rigging, so this is the, the stuff that kind of looks like a, oh, a phone tower. That goes up along the stage and across, so you can raise and lower it and it's got, this particular package actually includes the lighting, but not the audio yet. To really facilitate that and to reduce the cost of having those events there, we've gotten some feedback from, from some different folks and it is very costly to bring all that stuff in. They've got to assemble it, disassemble it. This would actually permanently add that to the facility and actually add the lighting piece as well, enhanced lighting piece. Those of you that were on council probably recalled, Dave, I think you recall and were in the part of those meetings that really the audiovisual portion of that original remodel was, was basic, was very, very basic. So this really isn't a surprise that this has been a criticism and, and something that it could be an improvement. I will say that along with this, should the Civic Center Place Board and the city council in the future want to upgrade the audio portion of that, this would allow that to be just hung from that rigging permanently. Or for like a concert or something like that, raise it, put their audio on it really quickly, save some costs. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the nature of the question was, I don't know if I answered it there, but I'd be happy to if I didn't.
Mr. Huckstra?
Yeah, the reason I asked, I was hoping Matt would give the explanation that he did. What we're being asked to consider here is a pretty important element in the evolution of the usefulness of the Civic Center. So I thought it was important for, first of all, all of us to understand what it was that was going to be installed, why it was going to be installed and how it will be useful for the flexibility, I guess, and the ability for that space to be used a lot more easily. You mentioned the cost of bringing rigging and stuff. I was under the impression that acts coming in, you know, was a matter of. I was under the impression that acts coming in, you know, it was a matter of course that they would bring their own stuff, but I guess that's not the case. And it's, it's to the tune of like ten grand or something for every occasion just to install lighting and stuff, which is large. It's a lot of money. So by us, uh, taking this step, it will make that a lot easier. And I, you know, I'm thinking back to those days when we were looking at everything that was going to be included or not included in the Civic Center renovation. Um, I guess I have to chuckle a little bit because some of this stuff was, were some of the things that were initially considered, um, and, you know, for one reason or another, uh, budget constraints and that sort of thing, um, at the time were considered more important. It's interesting that now we're catching up by making investment now, but I don't want to editorialize about that anymore than I've already implied. So anyway, this is a, a very important thing, I think, and it's, uh, good for us and the public to know that, um, it'll be a benefit to everyone who wants to use that in that, in those sorts of events. So thanks for enlightening us.
Mr. Corbin?
Uh, who will be taking the lead on the purchase and installation of this? Will it be the city of the Civic Center Board, Place Board?
So the purchase and installation will be done by our office.
But the Place Board will have no, have no, no control of this project, right? Is that correct?
No, this will be a city asset.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we'll oversee it, make sure it's done.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Byrd?
Um, how, how long does it take for them to install the current way?
Um, that's a great question. I've seen it done once, and it took them the better part of the day, if I remember correctly. And they had probably five or six people doing it.
Five or six people. How tall is, is that from, I guess, how high in the air is that?
So if you think, you know where the, kind of the stage is, right? It will go all the way up to, basically to the ceiling.
So probably about fifty feet?
Again, you're, you're asking me a question that, that, that's hard for me to answer. I don't think that's fifty feet. It's got to be probably two and a half stories, so probably a little less than that, maybe forty feet.
Okay.
But somewhere way close.
All right. So the reason I ask those questions, um, is safety. Safety is key in this situation. Um, you have people going up and down. We watched a little bit when we had our, uh, advance earlier this year. Got to watch them install some sound bars up there and, and they're on scissor lifts and they're up and down, up and down, up and down. And the more you're up in the air, the more the opportunity is for you to fall. Um, we had a situation in seventeen when we had a guy by the name of Ruben Gomez-Vasquez who died over there. Um, I don't want to repeat that. So, you know, this is, to me, a perfect way, even though it enhances what we have, it also, in my eyes, is a safety measure because you don't have people up and down the ladder so many times. And when you're going up and down or you're doing something repeatedly over and over, sometimes you lose focus. And at that height, you, you can't afford to lose focus. You see the situation that happened, and I don't know all the details at all, but, you know, the individual who hurt himself at the fair this year, um, there was some speculation that maybe his safety equipment wasn't hooked up correctly. I don't know that. That's just something that I've heard. But it's easily understood when someone does something over and 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 over that they can be complacent at times because it's just muscle memory and you're not really thinking about it, and you just forget one little thing. And a prime example is this lady I work with, she came in, she boils eggs every day, brings them in, she has a banana and an egg. She start eating her banana and she cracked her egg and it wasn't boiled. And she said, I do this every day. And she just, she thought she had a boiled egg until it fell all over the table, you know? But that's, that's what I'm getting at is, you know, it's funny there, but in another situation, it may not be funny. So I, I think this is really, um, this is a, a really good idea.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Will we adopt the recommendation?
Moved by Huckstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Seeing
Will there be any difficulty integrating it then? I mean, this is, we just got one bid and they must know how to do it. And, and it has to be, I mean, there's already existing some lighting already there.
Very limited lighting, but yeah, Parkway is a local company, located up on the north side, and they do a lot of work in like school gymnasiums and school auditoriums. So I'm confident that they'll be able to do the work.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnsors?
Yes.
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next is item number thirteen, communications from the city manager.
Mr. Van Beek? I'm going to make it quick tonight, two quick things. One, um, we've talked about that we are in a new budget year, and one of the, one of that, um, those items means that our public information coordinator, Mary Ann Manderfield, has now made the transition from part-time to full-time. And one of the, um, goals that we had in doing that is that she is going to work on putting together, but needs to do that in coordination with all of you to do a citizen academy. So I think we had talked about earlier, but, um, certainly you can men, um, contact me, would like to put a little subcommittee together of council members to work with Mary Ann, um, to target a timeline and then the components of that citizen academy. So feel free to reach out to me. Um, and then, not a promise yet, but, um, I always communicate with you on Fridays. I think that, um, with some of the items, we do have some things coming study session wise, but I have a sense that none of them will quite be fully ready for all the pieces to make a, a good conversation by next Wednesday. That could change between now and Friday, however. So maybe don't count on it, but I, I think there's a good chance that, uh, you'll have next Wednesday off. And that's all I have. All right. Thank you. Uh, next is communications from the mayor and, as well as appointments. I do have a number of appointments this evening. Uh, I would ask council to please approve the appointment of Dale Hoskins to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee for his first full term, said full term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Hoskins will replace Stephen DeYoung, who termed out on June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And I also ask council to please approve the reappointments of Justin Lambers to the Historic District Commission for his second full term, and that full term will expire on June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Kim Chaffee to the Historic District Commission for her first full term, said full term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And Audrey Hisslip to the Historic District Commission for her first full term, said full term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Uh, what is the council's pleasure in regard to these appointment recommendations?
Move to approve said, um, nominations.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support, ooh. Support by Arnsors, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, and I do just have one item in regard to communication. We had a great opportunity last week to host, uh, the Mayor Gary Carey and representatives, council members from the city of Walker as part of a community exchange program that the Michigan Municipal League, uh, helps coordinate. Uh, great opportunity to show them our best practices here in Holland, have great discussions with people who hold elected offices there as well. It's always a, a great opportunity to talk about what's, what's done well, what the job's like there, what our job is like here. Uh, in the coming weeks, we will be sending a delegation to the city of Walker to spend a day there, uh, with them to learn about their best practices and great things going on in Walker. Uh, so just wanted to thank them for coming, and, uh, we're excited to go visit the city of Walker in the coming weeks. Item fifteen, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Mr. Corbin?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, please accept the recommendation of city council, uh, by city council, the reappointment of Devon Shea to the Board of Appeal, of Appeals, term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to this recommendation?
Move to approve.
Moved by Huckstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Any other motions, communications from council members? Seeing none, uh, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager pursuant to a written request for a closed session. Uh, do want to let the public know, there's not going to be any action following this closed session. Uh, so no need to hang around, uh, after the closed session because the only thing we will be doing, uh, when we come back into regular session is adjourning for the evening. Uh, so with that, uh, what is the pleasure of council in regard to entering the closed session?
If we, uh, go into a closed session?
Moved by Arnsors, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Uh, we're now, uh, heading into closed session, so we have to ask the members of the public. Uh, it's nice to see you, but we cannot allow you to stay.